Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
We'll call the meeting to order. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
I don't have any.
Um, minutes from the prior meetings.
I will accept them all as printed.
I'll see if I can do it.
All right. All those in favor? Public comments, three minutes. Please don't overdo it. Dennis, nothing?
Nope.
A question. For the December fifteenth meeting, are you guys going to require people to be masked indoors?
I don't know when the legislature is meeting. I know that they are meeting to enact a law that allows towns to require a mask mandate. And I think that will be taken up once that bill is passed.
So if they don't pass that, will you not do that?
I think, as we explained before, we followed the mask mandates that the Vaught Department of Health put out. When they required masks, we required masks. And when they did not, we have not. There is the posting on the side of the building that if you are fully vaccinated, you do not need to wear a mask if you are not to wear a mask in here. The website has the, has not had updated information on it. That was from when there was a mask mandate.
I believe the CDC guidelines right now are that you can wear masks indoors.
I'm at, I'll ask the board what their thinking and feelings are on it.
I feel that masks for unvaccinated people should be in place. And then if you are vaccinated, they're encouraged, but not mandated at this point.
Okay.
That's who I feel.
You know, I, I think what we tried to do is follow the Vaught Department of Health and what their orders are or what their recommendations are. Where I suspect that they would recommend that everybody wear a mask. But I am, I'm not sure that we need to order that at this point in time to do that. And especially since, since I said the legislature has not passed a law that says that towns can do that. We could probably do it in the building. But I think we will wait until the legislature and the governor develop the law. Okay. Jerry, can you public comment? No? Question? Public comment?
Uh, I got updates.
Okay.
This is the time for that.
Well, what's it, what's it referenced here?
There's, there's two. There's one from the weather emergency committee thing that I need signed. And then the other one is the update about the flood insurance.
Why don't we wait for boards and officials for that? Is that good? Okay. Don? As tall as Dennis said you were, you were hiding there. I didn't even see you. Sandy?
Davey's sitting down.
Yes.
Dave, why don't you, when should I pick, talk about Scott?
Boards and officials, let's do that. So, all right, we will go to boards and officials. I will. Darlene?
Okay, Scott came down Monday and visited the site behind the town office here. And he has some recommendations. And he said he was willing to meet with the board on a weekend if that's feasible.
Did he put those recommendations in writing or he just wanted to meet?
Not yet.
What, did he say what they were or what?
He said, you could probably put an arch covert in there. And there's also the possibility of, I can't remember what town it was, that put in some kind of a bridge. It's just a very simple bridge. And he thought that would probably be the least expensive.
And did he say if there was any grants that you knew of or?
He's gonna check into that.
When would it be good for him to meet with us?
He said Saturday would be fine.
All right. Is that good with, with you? Why don't we see when he is available? When it's good, when he has the...
Since he's available?
What, no, but when he has recommendations or looks at the things, when he tells you that. And we can call a special meeting to view that and where his recommendations. Danny? Boards and officials?
Oh, it's that? Okay, wow. Cool, so I'll, I'll do it one at a time here. So this is the update on the flood insurance. It's really large enough that much of an update. I got you, I got you coffee, darling.
Thank you.
So I talked to H or Hillary. And essentially the, the update on that one is two things. We need to update the flood maps. We already knew that. But H put me in contact with a FEMA person. I think her name is Diane. I'm really bad with names, so it might not be the name. But I followed up with her email. She didn't respond, so I'll probably follow up with her via call next week. And just try to see how we can get involved. And then the other, okay, y'all, I don't have it in front of me. The second bullet point was, what was the second bullet point?
Taking an order to follow the flood plan, four minutes?
Look at this one.
Maybe, thank you.
So let me, before we move on to that, did he say how we go about updating the flood, the flood maps? Is that, isn't that through the state and the, and the feds that update those?
Yeah, but it's a conversation with, with the FEMA representative that is in charge of updating our flood maps. And they're supposed to do it in collaboration with the town.
Okay.
So, and H put me in contact. And the next one is just the, we need some type of like template for the flood, for the flood plane ordinance. And it's just the guy that I mentioned earlier, John Brooker Campbell. Has not been returning my emails, but it's the government, so you know, that's what they do. So I'll just follow up as much as I can to try to get us that, that template. So we know what we're looking at.
Do you know what last one was, like, next word, Davey?
Um, I don't, I don't know.
The maps, they were updated, I think maybe in the nineties, but the information on it is from the seventies. So they're very updated.
But I thought that there was, I thought there was an update that the state was doing for all of their flood maps within the last 10 years or so. Did that not happen? I, I know we were waiting and waiting on it. And the state was saying, yeah, they're, they're coming, they're coming. And we never got notified that they were or they weren't.
I'm not too sure of that. But according to John, who's our regional flood plane manager, our maps are, you are using data from the seventies. So regardless of what update the, the state did. Um, just okay, let me move on to the second update. Okay. So the other one is just, I just need town of Athens signatures. These are MOUs from Grace Farm and from Wild Shepherd to be our emergency food supplier piece about weather emergency.
And are those both USDA farms?
Oh, that's a great question. When you say USDA, you mean like?
Certified, right? Don't they?
Well, they have to be, you know more, but you have to be inspected or something, right?
Yeah. They're, all their meat products have to be slaughtered at a USDA official slaughtering house and have that stamp on them.
Yeah, that makes sense for meat. But that, but that doesn't necessarily apply to food like frozen berries or fresh produce and stuff like that.
So produce, okay. Yeah. Produce, I don't think it does. But any meat product would have to be.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, I know Wild Shepherd does. I don't, I think Grace Farm does on-farm slaughter. So we wouldn't, so we wouldn't, we'd just not get the meat from, from Grace Farm.
All right. Now, were we going to get new agreements as well with the Riverbend Market? And I think we were talking about the store and section over and maybe lease size as well?
Yeah, we've done some of those and we're working on, I think there are some that haven't been finished yet. I know, I think Tim has been having a hard time connecting with the manager down at the Riverbend. And I'm not sure who is doing lease size. But yeah, we're gathering them. And what we'll be doing is keeping a copy of the signed MOU here. And then we have blank letters that have your signature, yours and our Darlene's on them. So that at the time of an emergency, if, when we go to get food, we can bring those letters as sort of a reminder. And that says, and then you'll bill the town for whatever we take at that point.
All right. I will make a motion that, that we sign both, both of these agreements for the emergency.
I will second that motion.
All right. Oh, well, let me update that. I make a motion that we sign it and that Darlene sign it as a treasurer as well.
I'll second that motion.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And are these good for one year or is there a timeframe on them?
I don't think there's a timeframe.
There's a timeframe on them.
Okay.
The only limit that is on there is a budget limit of $300.
That means you can't spend more than $300 from the garbage.
Maybe I didn't sign it in the right place, yeah.
You did.
No, I did, but I put, I was up there.
Oh.
All right. Anything else?
No, just when those are done, I'll take a side, so we can.
Should be a copy somewhere.
Yeah, we will. Well, if they're going to be in the emergency, we'll make a conference. Jerry?
First of all, let me know that Jonathan Jessup came on Tuesday and has shimmed the piers underneath the floor where the concern that Don had identified was. So it was done in half an hour.
Wow.
He said, you know, he was happy to do it, you know, keep an eye. The one thing that he did notice, and I was gonna email you, Don, which I haven't gotten to yet. And we had had a good bit of rain, I think, on, was that Sunday into Monday? There had been a lot of rain. It was very wet under there where he went. So we've still got water coming in under there, which, and if you, when I walked into the building, I could see that the windows were all wet from the inside in the vestibule area. So there's a good bit of moisture still coming through under that building.
That is not good. Is there running water that you can see coming down?
I, I didn't look around the back. And I didn't go under because there was no ladder under there. And I just really wasn't able to get myself down there. So I have to go back and bring something that I can step down into and get under there with lights. But what Jonathan said was that you could see by the silt pattern that water had been running through. So.
Yeah, about 20 jacks to, that was a lot of work to raise that for.
I, I don't know. It wasn't, I mean, I, I got there. He still has a key for, for the building from when he worked on it. So he was able to let himself in at eight o'clock. And I got there at eight thirty when I thought we were meeting and...
And he was done?
He was finishing.
You have a bunch of guys with him?
Three, two.
Could that put the bleachers, not bleachers, few, few as back to the side of the wall?
I don't think that they lifted it to bring it to level. I think what they did was they lifted it to get a shim under there to stop anything from going.
So any more from sinking.
Yeah.
So do you think we need more drainage around the outside?
I don't know. I'm gonna get in touch with Danny and have him take a look at it because he did that drainage around there. And let him know what we found and...
I mean, it has been a very wet fall the past couple weeks, so.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, that could be it. But if, if you see in the silt, you know, where it's blowing under it, that would be my concern. But, all right.
So the other thing I just want to mention is again, the December fifth tree lighting at the meeting house. So I hope everybody will come out.
What time was that again?
Pardon me?
What time?
I don't think we nailed that one down yet, but it will be when it gets dark. So like five.
Should we serve it?
Yeah.
Well, but not quite. Probably like five, five-thirty. I'm not exactly sure. But it'll be in the Athenian and we'll get it out there on Facebook and whatever.
Don, boards and officials?
Cemetery commission meeting on Wednesday, December first. The probably briefed setting the budget for next year. That'll be good.
At what time?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, here?
Yeah, here at the office, yeah.
All right. Sandy, boards and officials? Nothing? All right. All right, warrants and mail?
Is this one only used for something specific or just?
That was a great, just to have a back.
Well, we're not trying to get from Carol. Carol.
That on the, that on the one?
And we gather up a bunch of solar lights to put around.
And both of these were for just to have a story. They weren't used for anything.
Are we, they said gravel on 35 Milwaukee Road.
But it was dark and we're in masks and we're trying to...
Flood stuff.
See our new...
The storm.
Very good, I know. But it was fun.
Maybe you can give that to the budget committee?
So we might need to get a new ink pad.
Again?
Well, it seems like it's not...
It's only like 20 years old.
No, it isn't. It started not long ago.
20 years old.
So all, so it looks like all five secretures in all three buildings here.
And they didn't have to be checked in school because they were done in 2019.
Oh, perfect. How's your haircut, Don?
Hey, pardon?
Did you get your haircut?
Yeah, yeah, I have a hair stylist. She does a good job.
Oh, she does?
How much does she charge?
He used to live with me.
I pay for the visual. What was this done?
Impossible.
Did you, did you get back to them?
I think I did.
Okay. You want to fill this quick?
If not, I will email them Monday.
Okay.
We got a grant for it. We haven't got the grant yet. I had a copy of the bill and the check.
Okay. And how much is the grant going?
I don't know.
What, what is it?
The leadover.
They paid for it all, I believe?
Yeah, I think they did.
Oh, no, 90%.
90%.
90%. Remember, we signed a...
Yeah, so, but that, that money hasn't been yet. Yeah, okay.
All right. We have a standard grant agreement from the state.
I think that's a copy of the one that we just did not come along with.
Did we sign it? Because...
What's the one? What is it for?
It is...
Yeah, that's, that's the...
The requirement, right?
I think it was...
$6, $700. So that's already done. Some water pump, yes.
And was this one 205? One from Iber for the Melville area?
Yes.
The whole thing?
Well, it's not.
But it, it doesn't say on these anywhere that it's where it's coming?
Yeah, but remember we put a bid in on that.
Yeah, yeah.
So that will be.
Well, we won't have too many more of these coming this year, lawn regents?
I hope not.
Well, they're still growing here.
I know, mine is too. But I refuse to cut it.
You will regret that in this report.
I cut it not too long ago and I got all the leaves off of it. Do you see that? No. Seriously? No, I didn't.
Can you throw those in?
I know we can't get it to you. You said this is easy to cover and cut up. But you just couldn't get it. Say that again.
So you don't want to do that. He was talking about getting paperwork from the Rockingham, the Riverbend and the Sunoco up in Chester. Because he gets the gas that doesn't have...
Non-ethanol. Yeah, well, Riverbend has, has ethanol, I think.
Oh, I think they have non too.
Really?
Yeah.
I did not know that.
I did not know that.
Because, um, that's what he was saying.
Okay.
So...
I mean, certainly for the smaller engines, the non-ethanol is good. Probably like for the leaf blower, that's big enough to be able to handle.
Oh, he's like, he said with the non-ethanol, he doesn't have to worry about if they forget to drain it. If they use part of it and then...
It won't come it up, yeah.
And it won't come it up. So I think he's going to be giving those two applications so that...
Okay. We can bring that up the next meeting if he gets the application for it.
So this is for gas cars?
For, yeah, charge account from it.
Where was, where do we have the dumpster down at town block? Over at school?
Well, both.
Both. Is there one there now or is it coming?
I think it's gone.
It must be gone. We have a bill from Regera's. It came in last dumpster?
I'm pretty sure it said Riverbend.
No?
Not at school? So this one, where was this dumpster?
Well, it was in the, throughout back of the town. Because it was worth the pile, yeah.
I believe the town garage had their dumpster.
Okay.
Or they think they have it? No, it's, it's down there now and I think that's the second.
Okay. They unloaded it twice?
No, this was the second.
Oh.
So maybe you can get ahold of them about stuff at the school. We wanna...
Yep.
There is a piano up there that probably nobody wants.
No, it's a piano down there.
That's it. It rolls out easy.
I don't want to know how many mice have bred in that piano.
Did you try to get rid of it?
We tried to sell it. I was, every day...
Get it away! You don't try to sell it.
I was trying to sell it, but everybody was walking in there.
People looked at it, nobody wanted it. Trust me, it's so out of tune that it's, it's in the 1900s. That's how out of tune it is.
How out of time. The problem is like one could pull that out of tune. It's like it'll take you years to get it. It's actually staying tuned for a little bit.
Can you tune a piano?
I can't tune a piano.
I, I was gonna, I was gonna try resell it to you if you, if you could tune it.
You give it to him!
I mean, I'm not talking to becoming here.
No, we have a, we have a town bonfire.
Oh, I like that idea.
No, it's got, it's got varnish on it.
I know, it's got varnish on it. We can't burn it.
Fire warning would let us, wouldn't let us burn that.
Would not let us burn that.
Put a town bonfire, that sounds fun. Hot chocolate, hot cider, hot dogs. Hot dogs, hot dog. It sounds fun.
Sandy, are you, are you gonna get a dumpster soon then up at the school?
Yes.
Okay. Because we've got that old sheet rock in that little closet under the stairs at the meeting house that I would like to get rid of for one of these dumpsters. There's not one at the garage now?
There is one.
There is.
There is one, okay.
There is one. Yeah, we just had it nailed down.
Well, I guess I could put it in the garage.
We just had it nailed down when we were gonna get ours.
Okay.
We're finding, the, that trap, that, the, dumpster, sorry. The dumpster in the town garage, that's for town uses?
No, that's for town garage use. Because people have dumped stuff at the town garage that shouldn't be there.
Why is testing that stuff?
And that's one of the reasons.
It's one of the reasons we closed the gate.
It's one of the reasons why the gate gets locked now.
I thought that that was a way of keeping it from being dumped in hedgehog and other desirable places.
Well, it is.
But they've been putting stuff in there that shouldn't be put in there.
Yeah, there's been electronics, mattresses, furniture.
Paint.
Oh, so when I get my new mattress, I can't bring it down there?
No. Make sure your name and address is on that so one don't wear.
Denise Ramblin'.
No, we just burn ours.
Yeah, let's not get that.
We don't.
Actually, that's what, we have a dump house for Rockingham for whatever we don't put up.
Yeah, we do too.
There is also a place in Springfield where the household hazardous waste collection is going to be from now on. It's kind of between the interstate and the Connecticut River, Alba Recycling.
On Route 5?
On Route, well, yes, it's Route 5.
So not at the landfill in Springfield or?
Well, no, they're, they're making a permanent household hazardous waste station there. It'll hopefully be open in the summer. But if you have large items, you may be able to take them there to Alba's to dispose of them. If you don't have a path, say to...
At a cost?
At a cost, yes. You will have to take form of it.
I liked when they had the household wits right here in town. It was so handy that one time we did a...
They just didn't have enough.
I know, because we're such a small town.
Yeah.
That it has become extremely expensive to get a company to come to do those. And then several of the companies that used to do it won't do it anymore. There has to be four in a... Um, there has to be four in a, um, four in a year by law. And they, I don't think they've been able to have four in a year just because they haven't been able to get contractors for that. Um, and it's gone from the weekend to a weekday. Um, and the waste district, uh, came to the conclusion to make a permanent one, which would be open a few hours each week during the summer, um, and store it. And it would be at the Alva, uh, site, um, that they're leasing from them, so. Next summer, uh, it will be, it won't be a, uh, once, once in the spring, once in the fall, it will be every week.
Oh, so once it's open, it's not only going to be open in the summer, once it's open next summer, it will be open.
I, I don't know if it's going to be open during the winter, um, but it's going to be open during the summer, so, uh, like four hours.
Well, it's better, you know, few, few weeks instead of like one day.
One day, instead of one day, it's gonna be like four hours a.
Because I always miss that one day.
It, it's gonna be like four hours a week is what they're hoping for, is the dating. I think it's not, uh, setting us down on that, so.
David, could I have a clip, please?
All right, um, we will move on to roads, Sandy.
All right, so on Tuesday, we met, uh, we met with a representative from FEMA. And, uh, that meeting went very well, we're going to have another meeting with him this coming Tuesday. Uh, he doesn't see any problem with us not being able to get some sort of reimbursement for the July flooding. And he also said there is a very good possibility we can get grants from FEMA for mitigation work on areas that we have problems in.
Nice.
So that was really wonderful. Um, Matt said that Palmer Goodrich has about three hundred yards of inch and a half stone. It does have some, um, pavement mixed in with it, so he can't sell it as regular stone. Therefore, he's willing to sell it for twenty-one dollars a yard. And Matt would like to, the consideration of buying it now when it's available. So in the spring, we have stone available for mud season.
Do we have the money in the budget for that though?
You just, you want to buy all three hundred yards?
It, it's three hundred yards, maybe, it's probably a little less than three hundred yards.
Now, what's the price of, uh, if we just got regular stone from another?
It's twenty-five, twenty-six dollars a yard, I think. So you are making a savings by getting it now and having it on hand for mud season. So I don't know where the balance is, but.
But if it's for mud season, it could come out of next year's. Preparation.
Yep, um, sand and salt are all set for this year. The big truck is in for its yearly servicing. Um, leaf blower has been a real boon to them. It's helping reduce their hours out there trying to clean the ditches out by being able to blow all the leaves out of the way. And of course, that's a grant from Wyndham Regional.
I think it was from the state, uh, but it was administered through Wyndham Regional.
Well, administered to Wyndham Regional. And, um, there is a lot of grants that are out there right now, so we're working on trying to secure some more of those. Then, um, the public sand shed, Don and myself have donated, um, we had our property log last winter, so we both donated a log. And Jimmy Trimmel also donated a log. And Jimmy did the, um, soya work on cutting the wood to make the roof that will go over the public sand area.
Well, thank you.
And, um, David also donated to it too. And, uh, the one thing Jimmy asked was if, uh, this donation could be mentioned in the town report. You don't have to mention us, just mention Jimmy did the work.
Okay.
John, that'd be good. Um, if you can tell the auditors that, well, yes. I mean, I think the auditors will know, but yes.
So I was just looking at the gravel, um.
But a lot of that's gone because of the flood.
I know, so until we replace it, we budgeted twenty-five thousand, we spent twenty-eight thousand seven hundred.
Yeah, so a lot of that will be coming back, do we know how much?
No, not at this point, no. That's still in the conversation with FEMA. I mean, we do have all that extra installed. I do know that there is a, we just got a bill because we just got two loads for, you must have got it too, email.
I didn't get a bill, email.
Oh, oh, about fifty-two hundred dollars.
No, I didn't read the bill, no, I didn't because we didn't get it.
No, we just sent, what, Tuesday?
I should have had it, but it wasn't.
Well, I'll forward it to you or bring it down to you.
Yep.
We're coughing me in the head. But like David says, if we're gonna use it next year, it, that money could be taken out of next year's budget.
It could, but we still need to pay him now.
To pay him. Yep.
But how much do we have in the salt actually?
There's thirty-two thousand, they've not counted the fifty-two hundred, there's sixty-six in here. So there's about eleven, twelve thousand we've spent. So there's twenty thousand.
What did you say the salt bill was at?
I think it was fifty-two.
Okay, and then they've already spent sixty-six, so six thousand, six hundred, so eleven thousand.
And they've only spent nineteen hundred of the fluoride and they had thirty-two hundred in there.
So between the salt and, and fluoride, there is.
We can get the money out of there.
Yeah.
Well, I'll make a motion that we, uh, purchase that, um, in anticipation for, uh, next year.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, anything else, then?
Nope, that's everything, he gave me, um, an update on that, uh, road pond damage. I got all the pricing put together, I'm gonna put it in an invoice. And it's gonna be about a thousand dollars. So I've just gotta get the pictures from Eugene from his.
Do we, and we do have their insurance company and their insurance?
Well, I've, I've got the copies, but he showed me some really nice ones.
Okay.
So I figured, well, I'd get the nice ones so that they can see that they really did.
Go to the margin.
Pardon?
They did damage the road?
Yeah. Yeah, so, um, and we'll probably write up the letter kind of explaining, you know, why we're sending it to them, so.
Okay, that sounds reasonable to me, good with you?
Yeah.
All right. Any further business? I will make a motion that we adjourn.
Look at that, Don, you left it, you left it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.